I'm not responsible for my time away, so I'll let you know before I have.
Don't you want to sit down?
He said I'm not responsible for his free plan, my time away, I don't feel like right now I'm.
Jesse, how are you all good? There's that two, yeah. Oh, I agree, I wouldn't agree with you, I mean, but I'm trying to say anything about this year, you know, finally. I'm thinking of the. Yeah, because I'm blowing like this, so how are you saying strange?
Especially in the city, so.
Yeah.
Alright, please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, equal and equal. With liberty and justice for all. Alright, we're all called Jesse, so if there's any care spoken.
Here.
Here, here from here, which is here. Now we call the ordinance, seven, eight, and the Open Meeting Act is posted on the South Wall, so you're willing to join that. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter in a closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be on the agenda, is the intention of the mayor and council to take up items on the agenda. However, if it leaves us, we have, uh, reserve the right to move the agenda around. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, they limited to three minutes per person and to two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come up to the podium and quote, state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak about. Everybody have a chance to review the agenda? Alright.
Thank you.
I'm going to take some of the February twenty seventh proposed agenda.
Second. And remember, January second, that we accept February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, the proposed agenda, any discussion? Kimberly, how do you?
Yes.
Goodie?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew? Motion here. Alright, review and action of prior meeting minutes, February thirteenth.
Would you accept the prior meeting minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and we're reading?
Second. Kimberly, move, Andrea, second to accept the prior meeting minutes for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and we are reading any discussion. Sam, how do you look? Andrew? Turn it in.
Cameron?
Yes. Motion here. Thank you. Communications, kind sir.
Absolutely, so a couple quick notes here. I guess page in the portfolio here, um. Working on a proposal with the fair word on the potential for retention pond on the ground, but they own the west of the ball fields. They're working on two rather large additions, building wise, animal building wise down there. And I've yet to have a chance to speak with, Casey Croker was the one who brought it in, but I've yet to have the opportunity to speak with him about and why there is a need for the retention pond. They do own that property, so as well within their rights, if they want to place a retention pond there, they certainly can. Um, our only issue is we've got some engineering to do as to where they're gonna pump that pond to. We can't, everything drains that dish right there by the railroad, so we all know that that's just full of water after an inch of rain, so.
Yeah, so be, uh, once you have better plans, maybe get Tom involved.
Yes, and I did, uh, Tom was here for the bid opening of, uh, which is later on in our agenda. Uh, I did have him go over, since I emailed all of you to, um, the alley and look at the door first, but I care, as well as showing the plans for, uh, guessing I showed him the plans for that. Uh, no one will know just off the plan, so.
Right, right.
Uh, which is just a G I S sketch at this point, so.
Just to kind of get a little of motions of.
They, they are working with, uh, the engineering property as well, SETI or SETI Engineering, isn't spelled like a K. So we'll obviously have to have their engineering department or our engineer cross talk.
Right.
So that we can all get on the same page, but, uh, our kudos to them, they, they wanna expand and build when they have the means to do so. Um, then, then how are we to do it? Um, I think they've done a good job of improving the fair year after year after year, and this is the next step, and so be it, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Helps the town, so helps.
Today I met with Seth, Seth Verge, um, the school is working on plans, uh, specifically SFA to place an animal science building, um, at the school. Uh, this would, for those of you who maybe aren't familiar with this area, but, um, where the shop door is going into the woodworking shop, and then there's a van, a van shed, about five, a van shed, uh, just to the south of that. Um, they're looking in that nook, there's a little nook.
Oh, yeah.
Um, that would fit perfectly in, um, fifty-six by thirty-two is the proposed size. That was after the school board building to increase the size, uh, which you don't probably hear. So I met with him today, we reached out to Tom Wardlaw and got his comments on it. Uh, Tom did verify that it was outside of the proximity for our municipal well, so it's outside the five hundred foot that it needs to be. Um, so, so the plan is right now to have rotating animals in there throughout the school year. We need one species no longer than three weeks, so pigs would be.
Do, do we need to change our.
Three weeks. I have not gotten that far yet, um, I assume there will be a rezoning of that parcel to accommodate that. Pigs for three weeks, and then maybe goats for three weeks, and then sheep for three weeks. And last year they did an aquaponics course that really was successful, so they wanna do that again with, um, giving birth to trout babies, or trout babies at home, trout babies, baby fish?
Trout babies.
I know, like, you have kids and goat kids and kids, sheep, kids, huh? I got to name this right?
It's a sheep or lamb.
Okay, lambs, you got lambs, so really what they're focused on is birthing. So, uh, they'll, they'll bring a cow in, not a cow, no, no, no bovine, a pig in to what do pigs do when they prepare them? Yeah, there you go. I can tell you whatever it is about cows, but the rest of the species don't exist.
Maybe you should take an act class.
They're only good for eating, I don't need to know anything else about the rest of them.
You run out if they don't get born, so.
They run out, they don't get, are you kidding?
Yeah.
Uh, so that's an exciting, that's an exciting project, and more to come, more to come on that, but that's something Seth Verge reached out to me.
Well, I'm, I'm going to talk to you like way ahead of time, so we can get that all.
Yeah, yeah, and they're still preliminary, um, obviously they're gonna have to talk, you know, the, the construction class would like to do some of the work, they just don't know the extent of what the construction class can do.
Right.
Um, obviously if they're, they're putting on a building, it's gonna have to be engineered, uh, in order to fit their requirements, the school's requirements. So it's exciting, I think it fits our area very well, uh, fits the school very well, and I know there's been an increase in the ag in SFA, um, since Seth and Stevenson and that whole crew sort of started, and Doug Babbitt has been handling it, so it's exciting. Um, we are still searching for public works employees, so if you know someone, let them know, uh, send them our way. Um, we'll get into a couple of meetings here, uh, coming up. Randy Hillbush will be here on the twenty ninth, hopefully, fingers crossed this time, uh, to complete our water rate study. Uh, the CRA will meet at noon that day as well. Uh, we got a bill to pay, that's really the only thing that's gonna be on our agenda at this point, not ready for any other action on, on, with them just yet. Uh, that takes us in in March, it's here, we're here, it's here. It was, just like Kim said earlier, it was spring for a day.
Yeah, it was.
Um, I will be gone the sixth of the night for the Nebraska Planning and Zoning Conference, Annual Conference in Kearney. Um, we are not sending anyone to the annual conference, the Nebraska Water Annual Conference. Uh, we're gonna try and get them some closer conferences overall, or something local in the area, and probably the fall conference. Cemetery will meet at five fifteen on Tuesday, uh, March twelfth. And then that takes us to our next city council meeting, that same day at seven, yeah. That is what I have right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, got anything for us?
No.
Cameron?
I was not able to attend the zoning meeting today or planning meeting, uh, do you have comments?
Yeah, um, really, they, they had to postpone, well, not cancel, uh, their January meeting, we were, we were able to meet with Quorum today. Um, we elected officers, they're keeping the same slate of officers. So, uh, Randall Hydeman is your president, Tricia Jimenez is your vice president, and, uh, Richard Toreen is your secretary with I A. Um, and then I gave them an update on the zoning rewrite. I know we kind of had that on, on pause for a little bit, I'm hoping to revive that, did speak with Miller and Associates, they're ready whenever we are. Um, he was, he, he did say that, you know, he provided us everything, but when we actually go through, it'll be a section by section type of deal, so. Um, I was a little worried, because when we got it all back at once, I was like, there's no way we can do this all in one meeting, it's just not gonna happen. Um, and then I talked about the, the two, two subdivisions that are happening on the Bishop property and the CRA property, and the timeline for that, and informed them, we're gonna be meeting a little bit more regular because of that, like, that public meetings. And then I also received a conditional use permit request, uh, from Jetball in on placing, uh, poop tunnel on his property next to Archie Silverens at the school, by the school, the elementary school, um, for a U N L extension project that his daughter is doing. So, um, I think it's very cool, he gave me the, I've got the full packet, but I'll be sending out the certi, the necessary certified letters to everyone in that area, and it's a temporary conditional use permit, it's a five-year conditional use permit for that, so. Uh, we'll be, they'll be meeting again for that, and then we'll have a public hearing again to approve it. We love them, we just wanna have public hearings all the time, so, um, that's, that was it for planning.
Thank you.
Planning zone.
Thank you, do you know other updates? Alright, okay, Charlie? Sam?
No.
Alright, perfect, thank you. Financials, Jesse?
Don't think I had anything that really stood out, I had, I kind of flipped through them again after I just got back, so I'm fine. I didn't have a way to wait and check, I wrote on there, it was in a sprint. That was, it was no progress. I know later, I guess, in the packet, we're gonna have some discussion on the A W A statement, and you guys can see illustrated on the airport maintenance, they have not A C H'd any of that out yet. They keep putting it, the balance that they told us in the building claims, it won't touch on that later in the packet. I don't, I guess while you're looking at it, at least you can see that, so just the U M R hundred and sixty for the N D B K.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, I just know that we accept them, I don't want to say. Any public comment today?
Hi, I'm Robin Quinn, my address is eight five four Hancock Avenue. Um, I am here signing my capacity as library board director, um, on the agenda of discussion and review of revisions to the personnel manual. Um, the library staff had sent, um, a list of kind of our questions and concerns, um, out to the council, we liberated some of you back. Thank you very much for that. Um, when you guys get to that agenda end of this evening, I was, we were wondering, um, if you could address, um, a couple of the items that we still had some questions on. Um, one, just wondering, um, about the choice, um, to go to a biometric time clock versus a non-biometric, for their benefits or downfall that caused you to go in that direction. Um, and one thing that we had discussed as a staff is that while the time clock, um, will allow the tracking for hours logged by employees, it doesn't account for obviously productivity or the amount of work that is completed during that time. Um, and wondering if that was something that was of concern to the council. Um, and then just a clarification of why, um, there's still a requirement to complete paper time sheets in addition to the time clock, if that was kind of a backup measure that will be eventually phased out, or just wondering about that, so, um, if you could address that during that agenda edit, we would appreciate that, and thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Any other public comment?
I guess, listen, when I come up.
You're on the agenda.
You're, you're on the agenda.
Yeah.
Fill you down later.
Yeah. You get special.
Yeah. But thank you.
Alright, and you finish with that. Um, discussion and review of the revisions to the personnel manual. This will probably be the last time it's in rough, so next time we'll have the resolution to, to, uh, so that we can go ahead and move forward with this.
I received two written, uh, statements, um, that I would like to read, on further request, uh, in regards to this, and the first one I received was from Eric McForman. Um, first off, I would like to apologize for not being able to attend a meeting in person in the first weeks. Your time on this matter, I would also like to thank Ed for relaying my message to you all. Secondly, I'd like to start by saying thank you for your service to the community. Sitting on a council or board is a very thankless job, it's not very often that people come to you, tell you about the good things that you are doing or have accomplished while serving. I'd also like to thank you for the work you have done on the wage adjustments and making positive and progressive changes to the call-in overtime. My takeaway from last meeting was that council is getting complaints for concerns from community members about not seeing the public workers out and about due to our current hours of operation for the public works department. There's also some discussion of breaks and taking an unpaid lunch. As coun, as council members, you are the voice of the people. I could see it on some of your faces and hear it in your voices that those complaints have been consistent. Constant, sorry. Uh, I understand that getting bugged repeatedly about this topic may be annoying, but is it worth changing a policy that is currently in place? Is that what is best for the community? We are working, we are currently hiring in the public works department, this will be our fourth hire in as many years. I can say with some certainty that none of these employees left because they didn't like the hours that we worked. I've stated before that I took this job and continue to stay at this job because of the hours we worked. Not because I love getting up early in the morning, but because it allows me to be involved in my community through community service, allows me to be involved with my kids' activities, and allows me to do what I am most passionate about, by coaching high school football. I feel I'm very good at my job and that I work very hard, I don't say this to be arrogant or toot my own horn, say this because I don't wanna lose my job. I took this job with a future in mind, I took this job because I could see what working those hours would afford me to do, like attending my children's events, being able to continue coaching, all without missing work or having to use paid time line. So I worked very hard not to give anyone for a reason, not to give anyone a reason for me to lose my job. With that said, I would ask, how many are complaining? Does this number outweigh the number that are four hour hours with a number that don't even care as long as work is completed? Why can't they come talk to Ed or any of the public works employees to try and understand why we do it this way? Are they upset that work is not being done or completed? This then should be addressed with that as supervisor, not with policy change. Or are they just jealous and mad they don't get, they don't get what we have? But then remind them that we are currently taking applications. As for the breaks and lunch, if the council would like us to take our two fifteen-minute paid breaks that we are off, that you offer, set the times you would like us to take them, and we will take them at that time. If you're going to require us to take a thirty-minute unpaid lunch, why can't we take it at the end of the day as it is unpaid, eight hours work is eight hours work? Was brought up at the last meeting that people feel we need to be seen more, I asked why. We are not in an office setting, we don't have the space for people to come and visit us face to face. For most of our job, we have very little interaction with the public. Don't feel like the public works department is the face of the city, this would be Jesse and Ed. So I would ask if our work is being completed and we show up whenever there is an emergency, what difference does it make when we are doing our work? Again, thank you for your time and consideration on this topic, signed Eric McForman. Second letter I received was from Val Foster. Dear city council members, Mayor Schmidt and Edward, I'm unable to, to attend tonight's meeting and speak in person, uh, because basketball, go Plainsmen, uh, but wanted to address one primary concern I have related to the implementation of the biometric time clocks. I appreciate the opportunity to have my voice heard. Let me first say that I'm not necessarily anti-time clock, manual or biometric. I know that many cities utilize time clocks, however, I'm still unclear as to why the city of Grants has made this decision. We, library staff, were encouraged by the mayor to reach out to her, council, and Edward with questions. We have done that on more than one, on more than one occasion, both in person at a library board meeting as well as via email. When start, when library staff asked questions of the council, mayor, and Edward via email, we did receive responses, thank you, the most questions, but those related to the why behind the institution of a time clock were not clearly addressed. I understand that most businesses do not ask or care what the employees' opinions are when it comes to a policy manual, but it is the city of, but, sorry, but is the city of Grant one of those businesses? And do or they, and do they slash we want to be? We were encouraged to ask questions, and then when we did, this is the responses we received. This is the response we received. I'm also aware that we received the revisions to the manual January fourth, but that only gave us a few business days, only one of which all of our staff was together to discuss them, to look them over, pro, process them and ask any questions before the first reading at a city council. And while I understand that the public comment portion of those meetings is when we had the opportunity to speak and ask questions, that seemed to me to be ineffective for them. There wouldn't have been time for the city council, the mayor, or Edward to research and respond to questions, and to be honest, as an employee, I didn't, still don't, feel particularly comfortable asking some of these questions in a public forum. While most likely not legally required, having an actual in-person conversation with all city employees regarding the proposed changes, and the thought process behind them would have been appreciated, uh, at least by the library staff. Not to get our permission or to even ask for our opinions, but to give staff an opportunity to ask questions and better understand how this is all going to work and what the actual goal of this change is. Based on the responses received from the mayor and Edward, it's still unclear how implementing a biometric time clock is going to achieve the goal of collecting data on attendance, labor costs and payroll, or increase efficiency in a differently or more effectively than the current system. It may be that I don't have all the necessary information or I missed something along the way, certainly wouldn't be the first time for me. I apologize if my comments come off as harsh or unprofessional, that is not my intention at all, but is why I would have preferred more conversation about this earlier in the process. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts, Val Foster. I just, really, really quick, we are, we are planning, Jesse and I spoke with Tom on having city attorneys sit down again with the employees prior to implementation, uh, in passing of the resolution, uh, for that, for that portion, so. We will have Tom sit down again, just like we did last time when we changed them, Tom sat down with all the employees, we went over everything. This time we're gonna do it prior to the implementation of the resolution.
Okay. So time clocks basically is for protection of the employer and employee. As I explained, it, it, they're signs when the person's here, when they leave. Most businesses have them, um, so it, this, it isn't just for our current employees, but it's also for future employees. It's also for future councils, for future mayors, so that the expectations are, are clear. Same thing with breaks and mills. Expectations are, are clearly defined, so that there is, uh, there's no guessing. So, so that would be my main, what do you want to say, um, reasoning? And I did put that in, um, the email that was sent out previously. Um, any council members have anything to add to that?
Um, I think that sometimes there never is, you do something proactively, rather than react actively or reactively. And so sometimes we just have to put these things in place because there isn't currently a problem.
Right.
But when you find out a problem, then it's sometimes too late, so, um, as far as do we have an answer why we prefer choosing biometric versus manual, and then also, um, the paper comment, are we, is it gonna be doubled up for a little bit, while then transition out?
And some of them could be, we put that in there because some of them will be paper also included with it, um, for.
Specifically multiple department workers, so.
Yeah.
The public works employees.
Okay.
We have to split that up so that when Jesse does the breakdown for insurance and, and every, all the, all the breakdowns per department, uh, they have to be broken down, I worked an hour in, uh, in parking wreck, I worked an hour at cemetery, I worked four hours on waste, I worked two hours in the streets, so that has to be broken down so that we can do that. And so that they don't have to come back and forth, the public works employees will be clocking in and clocking out with our new system, but they will be recording their departmental hours on paper.
And we may be, uh, doing a sick leave and vacation through paper.
Yes.
We're still, we're still working with the system to see.
Jesse and I are demoing the system right now, um, we're trying to work out the case and find all the errors in it before we go live with training, uh, which will be months from now, I can promise you that, um. And there are some things we would like to change, but this is not, uh, they make these systems universal so that all the employers can use them, so. You know, we have two, three-week time periods throughout the year, well, during that three-week time period, it's gonna have to be paper on it, because they, they have no option for setting. It's either bimonthly, semi-monthly, monthly, it's set up for universal use, not for customizable use, so.
And you do have an I T ticket in for that.
Yes, yeah, I did submit an I T ticket, and they did tell me that if they get enough of them, they would address that. Um, so I'm encouraging other people who are using the system to submit a ticket, a ticket on my behalf, uh, I will tell you, and again, these are not necessarily communities we compare to, um, like on the pay sheet. Uh, but McCook, when they built their new city office, they implemented the same system with U attend, work well as their, as their choice. Uh, they chose, they chose the biometric because it was more secure, uh, when it comes to clocking in and clocking out. Um, like Sam said, we don't have, not that we have a problem now, we want to maybe prevent a future, we want to be proactive rather than reactive. Um, but he did, I was speaking with Nate over there, sorry, Nick, at McCook, and, and he did say that they did have a problem, you know, prior to that with employees writing other employees' hours down, or, so he said the easiest way to combat that is a fingerprint, you can't, well, unless you're.
James Bond.
Unless you're James Bond.
Right.
Or Tom Cruise.
Right, versus a pen or.
Yeah, so, and Cozad actually did the same thing more recently, um, and I know Imperial, is it is looking at, again, our communities that we're directly compared with, uh, but they're all looking at it in the same system, this is, I mean, I don't wanna say we're on the, on the edge, but I, I don't wanna be reactive in this situation. I, I think proactive is the best approach, and I also did, um, I, and I can go get a copy of it now, I apologize, I don't have it in hand. But work, or U attend, a company buy work well, uh, because everything has a parent company. Um, they do not store the fingerprint data, it is encrypted down to a mathematical formula.
Right.
So there's no actual storing of the fingerprint data.
Kind of like what my bank, you know, you know, I, I have an app and then I have biometrics, so, you know, similar, it's, it's not new technology, so it's pretty safe.
So I don't know if that was clear as mud, if that helps at all.
No, that, that was, I mean, I mean, like, everything new, there, there's a process, though.
I did have a chance to meet with Brittany today, this first opportunity, she's in school. Uh, first opportunity, they're out of school because their girls made it to state basketball, so go Texas. Um, I like to support the surrounding school, you'll be there. Um, so she had an opportunity to come in today, and I sat down with her and sort of, sort of the system, um, what little of it that I knew. And she was excited, she, she thought this was a great move for the parking wreck employees, um, and, and thought this would be a very, very good thing for the parking wreck employees, um, specifically the pool. Um, knowing that we'll, we will have the opportunity for them. Um, specifically the pool, um, knowing that we'll, we will have the opportunity for them. Uh, you know, to, she'll have the opportunity to monitor. She can also set their schedule. On there as well as there's an option for them to request time off. So this is essentially creating, um, an all-in-one solution for them.
Right.
And, and it's the same thing, uh, the, if the library has a set, uh, a set schedule, they can create. They can enter their schedule in there too and modify it if they need to or whatever. Um, I know that fluctuates from time to time, somebody calls in sick, so someone's gotta fill in or whatever, but. Uh, there are things I like about the system and it was one of the highly, most highly rated systems.
Within, within our budget.
Yes, because these were three hundred dollar a piece time clocks, so not very expensive at all. And we don't have to worry about ordering paper, um, running out, uh, with the.
Right, but with the.
Manual, sorry. What I call the casino style, so, um, yeah, I mean, I just, I, Brittany was, was excited about it for many time clocks.
Then I wanted to say something about the breaks.
Okay.
Um, so I understand on some point what Eric is saying about like if it's unpaid, but it doesn't matter when I take it. Um, but also, you know, I try to think about this, like in healthcare, we can't just all just. Take a thirty minute break before the end of our shift and that would just wouldn't be allowed. Um, and, and as far as telling you when to take a break. You need to take a break within the first three hours of work. I mean, you can't, everybody, nobody in the, um. Have all the nurses take a break at the same time, then patients die, so, you know, it has to be a rule. It's just sometime in the where it's covered.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I do think he makes a reasonable statement with the fact that he coaches and I think that it's unpaid and when does it matter, but. I don't think it should always be that, but what I was wondering is, and maybe the solution here is, is on this, like a special occasion with your clearance. Like, hey Ed, I have a dentist appointment. The only time I can get in is at this time tomorrow. Could I just take my unpaid lunch at the end of my shift? And you could say, yep, per city supervision, you know, super superintendent approval. You can take your break at the end of your lunch, but, or hey, football season is temporary. It doesn't last all the time. And they like, okay, yeah, or the special times during football season, you have to have practice if you're early for a game, you know, that's fine. And I think that's a fair compromise, but I don't think it should be every single time, you know? Um, you know, I got, you know, your guys are coming in, say, Ed, you know, my pedicure appointment is always at the end of my shift and, uh.
My cuticles are not great.
See, you know, so, um, so I do think there's compromise there, but I also think that like in most situations. You can't just take a break at the end. You just can't take your last break in your shift and if it's in the last hour.
Oh, that what it is, that's a shorter shift.
Right.
If you leave early, if it's a standard, it's.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm understanding.
Yeah. You're not, and, yeah.
Which, and I, I mean, I'm with you and I, I think actually that was exactly what I said when we were unable to be here last meeting was, you know. Absolutely, that there are gonna be times where it makes sense to make an exception if you're. Voluntary for the community or you have something family related come up, we need to flex it every now and again, or even for a short season. Makes sense, but as a state or a gold sum, it's just a year practice. It doesn't occur anywhere that I'm aware of, actually.
In well.
But good point, I mean, to your point, I think good points made in the, in the letter. Um, but I think we have equal reasoning for wanting breaks normally to be in the middle of the day.
Right, and we wanna be fair to all the employees and, so we need to have a standard in order to take them, I, I think. If, if there's a standard and expectations out there, then that's the way that. A person, an employer can be fair to all employees.
Yeah, I just think it's reasonable to say that deviates out from that just to get permission to wear your. You know, that it's tracked, there's no time, you know?
Andrew, any thoughts? I, that's not said very well in the meeting. I agree exactly with Sam. And have a little bit of validity in the, for everybody.
Right, and in the workplace, it's, it's pretty common and we're not asking something that it does.
It's not gonna, you have a job, what, not.
Right, I, I mean, we've been very generous. We started in Jan- in January, we've given employees, um, time to. To talk to us and most employees don't do that, but we, we have, so I, I, I think that.
Well, you have there, you have it in there? Or you didn't get it?
I don't think it, yeah, it'll at least be written.
Kind of common sense.
Right, I mean.
I, I agree. I just wanted to make sure you didn't want that issue.
I think, I think to kinda have a little bit of that in there, but it's supposed to be on the. No, meal and rest, yeah, but it's supposed to be on the very rare occasions employees need to take their time. At the, though we have a right.
He has mentioned no meal break, but also, you know.
I didn't address, I mean, it doesn't have to be. No meal, yeah, they're constantly working through on such an issue.
That's a problem, that's right.
Uh, I addressed that, I just didn't address the. Like they're taking me at the beginning and the end, it's the same. But if you, if you're okay, I'm, I'm okay, I added another sentence to that.
Right.
I, I just wanna make sure that you don't want it in.
Right.
Well, the question is, another reason why we need to put it in there is if you feel like. You're not the city manager anymore, we don't have this conversation over again. Are you gonna base them, we're not city council anymore, we're already kind of managed.
Do you feel like the language, the way that it is addressing, it's the fact that this is going to be not a standard, but an approved. Occasional.
A sample question.
Is it clear to all new council, all new staff, that's the intention? Okay, so then in that case, I think, yeah, we may need to.
I think so. I, I think basically if we're thinking long-term, we add a sentence because people aren't gonna remember this conversation. I'm not gonna be here. It's just like, why did Ed used to let me do it, just wasn't saying, doing the manual, so, you know?
Right.
So, I just. I, I, I'm glad you brought, that was the point I was getting at was. While we love our positions now, positions may not be our position spread. I pray out of here until they're stared on. I really do, but other councils might not see it that way. Um, so, so I, I wanna know if you want that wording on special occasion, the city superintendent. And your respective supervisor can authorize in the shift break slash man.
On a case by case basis, right?
On a case by case basis, right?
What do you think? I'm just reading the sentence now, or the paragraph now, it says, on very rare occasions, employees, uh, this is page twenty-seven of the manual. Uh, employees, buppa da buppa. People have time to tell it, may need to work through their meal break, at which time they will note on their timesheet that they had no meal break due to job requirements. So that is specifying a job requirement, um, if an employee has a pattern of repetitive no meal breaks. The respective supervisor shall make adjustments to the scheduling to reduce the occurrences of an employee. So I, I do think we don't necessarily call out the need for working through a meal break related to personal.
Well, and I, I read that as I worked eight and a half hour shift. Because I didn't get my lunch break.
It could be read that way too, actually that's valid.
You know?
Yeah, that's valid. Your shift is, you know.
Eight hours.
Eight and a half hours because we intend you to have a thirty minute lunch.
Yeah, I didn't give them the breaks, I actually worked eight and a half hours.
Right, that makes sense, okay, yeah. Well, so with that, I mean, we don't call out the current shift of any employee. I mean, there's library hours, so obviously it is staffed. We don't call out the staffing hours for our city. Departmental workers at all, so does that, does that something that. Your, and you need clarification then? Cause you went straight to eight and a half hours.
Why does?
If we say you have to take a thirty minute paid lunch to let any given place in the eight and a half hour schedule.
But we do define, we do define what they have, yeah, schedule.
Schedule.
So we do have that.
And then we're talking about, okay, so we're just not specifying certain times.
Yes, yeah.
Time of day, but.
Yeah.
Right, because I don't know if it's.
Variety of schedules, so it would, we'd have another page, we try to do that instead. Library would be staffed during library hours.
Right.
The office staff would be staffed during office hours. Does the city employees want us to indicate what the current hours are? So that if there were a different council, a different superintendent, that that couldn't be changed without some discussion?
Uh, well, because that's actually my, and my discretion, so. The supervisor.
What I'm saying is this, this entire letter is about, I took this job because of the hours that I work. We don't call out that the city staff starts in six AM and ends at whatever time they end up.
But we do call out to the department head instead.
Right, so what I'm saying is, if you're not the department head. Do the rest of the city employees want this called out in, in a manual somewhere? It seems pretty important.
I understand where you're talking now, I was not.
You see what I'm saying?
I was not understanding.
I'm firing you, I'm just saying, if for some reason you like us.
I, I'm not, I was not on the railroad tracks with you now.
Get on board, rock on. I'm just saying, like, it's very clear that this is, this is about hours and you don't actually state it anywhere, so. But, yeah, I don't. That sets when we start overtime, that sets.
Well, yeah, I think it's, it's when it's starting at the end of a shift. Like, okay, let's say that it's. Middle of dinner and for whatever reason, public works needs me to be there until four AM that day. Uh, they're saying that their shift is from six to two and then there's something that has to be done at four, right? You know, that's when you give the snap, you know, oh, well, that's maybe for overtime, because I have to be there before my started version is six to two.
And you might have somebody who has a doctor's appointment, doesn't get here until ten and they wanna work from ten to four.
Right.
Then, you know, you would, you would want to put their hours in during that time period now, right, yeah.
I mean, so we're going to continue with the flexibility of the department head.
Well, and plus, if you have, if you have four employees here at six AM and they're not work, they're not working for employees and they're just standing around. Whereas like, well, it's gonna be delivered at nine thirty, it's like, then we're all gonna have to busy. You gotta say, well, you know, sleep, I don't know, later, you know?
I, I think that, uh. You know, I, I understand my position is not forever. At some point, you're on the A job and you're gonna put third on me, or the teacher perhaps is gonna say, see you later. Uh, at which point the next person that they hired, if they wanna change the hours and lose all of their employees, then that's on them. I mean.
I was just playing devil's advocate, I mean, there's just a lot of. I have, I have valid points, I totally agree and I just.
So you think we should not put specific hours?
Yeah, I agree.
What's it?
I mean, then you're, then we don't have change this, if you change the hours of the office, it would be a great thing.
Well, it says that your general leave city offices are open for seven, four, ten, Monday to Friday. Departments, they establish different hours of operations subject to approval by the city superintendent. Non-library employees and/or their respective government body of library employees.
Yeah, cause I know, like, you know, the library is working on what's the best day to stay open late right now. So they wanna change that, you know, we don't wanna.
Right.
We don't wanna mess with that, cause they know better than we know, what, what, what day is the best day to stay open till whatever time.
Yes.
Seven, yeah, it's okay, I knew there was time.
Any questions? I did, so I, number one, I wanna say. Thank you for recognizing that not all of us are able to take our thirty minutes at the end of the day because. We have more public facing jobs, so that does make it more fair for all employees to take them, so I appreciate that. Um, one question I had related to, um, what we are currently doing at the library. Um, because we don't typically have time to take breaks during the day. Um, sometimes we do, it just depends on the flow of traffic and all of that. Um, and so what we are currently doing with our lunch breaks, um. Val and I take our two, when we work in eight hour day. Val and I take our two fifteen minute breaks as our lunch break. Um, and we discussed this and were told at some point when we started doing this, that that was okay to flex our breaks into our lunch. And Sarah, um, we had, I gave the staff the option of, you can either flex your time into there. Or you can, um, work later in the day. Um, and so Sarah typically works eight to five thirty on her full days. Um, and takes that half a minute, half a minute, half a minute, like half an hour lunch break. Um, and the library is closed from one to one thirty because not, there's not a day, um. We don't have coverage every single day for lunch. And so the library, and this was something that was in place before I got there, because the previous librarian, when she worked by herself. Didn't have a lunch break, so she would like put a closed sign on the door, run across the street for fifteen minutes, it's not something that, that, so that's the reason that it's set like that. Um. But I'm wondering if with the new, um. I don't wanna say regulations, with the new parameters that are being set, if that is something that we would still be able to do?
Yeah.
Okay, so then what happens if we don't get to take the breaks that we are?
I guess it's normal life, when we do not always get our fifteen minute.
Right.
And every job, I mean, yeah, we try, sometimes if we have to run to the pharmacy, you know, you walk to the pharmacy and you're back in eight minutes.
Right.
I mean, that was our break for the day, you know, and the next day you may not even have a chance for a break. I mean, it's just life. I mean, but then the next day, you know what, it's very easy to say, I'm gonna go sit down in the back for ten minutes. Just take messages. And if you've got somebody out already at the circulation desk, go sit down for ten or fifteen minutes and then go back out. And you take turns doing that, but it's not always, I don't, it doesn't always happen.
That's the same with, it might work, I mean, lunch, I can get fired over by not taking, but as far as breaks. It, it. It, it's use it or lose it, I mean, that's just.
I bet we, I mean. I worked in today with no breaks.
I was just gonna say, right, I bet we get breaks.
That's how it is, yeah.
Hundred percent of the time, but it's fine, they're in the policy, that's what they're there for.
I mean, you could, you could be presented with this scenario depending on your staffing and.
Hmm.
Who is hired, where an employee could create a case for, I am not allowed to take my fifteens and that's definitely not okay, right?
Yeah.
So I do think if there's a concern that regularly not being able to take a fifteen based on staffing and hours, then. If, yeah, I would need to be readdressed per turn, because I don't want the city where you or any of us in hot water.
As long as you have to, you have to plan it with your employees, you plan that, right, you know?
Yeah, some job, yeah, I mean, there, there are jobs at my employer where we, we tell you exactly when it's starting and when it's stopping. Because we are staffing a live environment that has to have coverage, like nursing or.
Yeah, no, the nurses can't be breaking at the same time, like you said.
Yeah, so whatever is easiest, I suppose, but yeah, combining into, to a lunch. Lunch is, yeah, plus the fifteens are paid time and your lunch is not paid. Yeah.
And, and I'll give you just sort of, you know, you keep talking about examples in different departments, you know, I mean. Jesse and I try and stagger our lunches the best we can. She, she, I let her pick first, cause she's been here longer, she always goes at eleven, and that was.
Yeah, it's so rough, though, no?
Based on when her mom could go sometimes, usually, so. Uh, and I try and take mine at noon, I, my fifteen break in the morning, I, Jesse can tell you, it's, it's gonna go. Get a breakfast sandwich from eight forty-five to nine, he'll be back at nine. And that's, that's my break. I usually don't get one in the afternoon. So I usually just take that one break and, and, and if I get a thirty minute lunch, I get a thirty minute lunch, it's great. Nine times out of ten, I'm eating at my desk, whether it's sandwich or my. I mean, I'm, I'm taking a working lunch, but I'm still eating, and I know that's not something I should be doing, but, um. There is, it is life, just like Andrew said. I know my previous employers, there's no comparison to a city, but was a ranch. And I can tell you right now, we worked sixteen hours without a break, regardless if you were in the tractor, on a horse or a four wheeler. Um, there was, your, your break was moving cattle. And you're gonna enjoy God's greater.
I mean, you just have to send out communication among each other. I mean, we don't all leave the bank at the same time to run to the pharmacy either. I mean, it's okay, I'm gonna be gone for about ten minutes, okay, then the next person, you know.
Yeah, that's fair good about that.
Yeah, I mean, you just.
She's gonna say, I gotta go do X, Y and Z, perfect, I'll be here. Or, hey, Jesse, I'm gonna go out to the airport and just do, I'm gonna go have a chat with Ryan, or I'm gonna do a walkthrough, I'm gonna go to the pool for fifteen or. You know, thirty minutes, so I'm gonna spend my lunch at the pool today. I'm gonna go have a chat with Ryan, or I'm gonna do a walkthrough, I'm gonna go to the pool for fifteen or, you know, thirty minutes, so I'm gonna spend my lunch at the pool today, so. Yeah, I mean, it's, communication is something that we can all work on, I, I agree, I agree, I think that's the crux of, of making this work, it's key.
So do you want to take a stab at some verbiage regarding very rare occasion? Personal time requiring lunch at the end of a shift or start?
Yeah. I, I think it's very similar to the wording I have in there for, um. Um, the no, no meal break.
Yeah.
For a job requirement, just changing that for personal.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think it's almost identical to that, just changing that word into personal, or job requirement slash personal type wording, I'll send it to Todd and let her review it.
Yep, that we did.
All right, anything else on the mountain now? So next meeting, the expectation is to have the resolution, and we can. Be done with this one?
I will change the wording, send the text out and then. I'll reach out to the employees for scheduling meeting before, for the next meeting.
All right. Uh, discussion on the League of Nebraska Ministers, Power of Nebraska's Canadian Service. And and I know some of the council members had asked for this so that it's ahead of break season, so. Um.
We usually get this January or February, in a January, middle of February-ish, right, Kristen? Somewhere in there, sometimes later, um, I usually don't tackle this right away knowing that you also like to look at the current. Um, consumer pricing debt or the, the C P I from, for the Midwest region. Um, last year, we didn't even get it to the end of March, actually, it was, it was late.
Yeah, it's a retired lady that does it, it's really not, I don't think, but it'll lead, it's just a survey that one of the clerks. That's one of them, I think, but.
It does say, maybe Nebraska went, it sent out, so.
Okay.
Um, so I did include the, the, the C P I, as I mentioned at the last meeting. Um, that changed, that I did not get the updated C P I in here, I can tell you it moved point two percent. Uh, so it's now three percent, uh, three point two, so it's going down again, I know, I know, go to the grocery store, tell me it's going down. Go to the gas station, tell me it's going down, it's not happening, we know it, but it did go down to three percent. Which it's been doing about every quarter, about twenty five point two five every quarter, uh, quarter of a point every quarter, no, that's confusing. Um. Also in there is, um, what it would look like if we paid a right side wage correction mid-year, that would be April first. Um, as it pertains to the Nebraska Pay Survey. Um, took a few more things out of there than we normally do. Um, sometimes we get good responses from enough communities, sometimes we don't, not all the communities respond, and that's largely based on. Does it mean that the description, is it seventy percent of hired on the description that they give? So, city, city administrator, city contributor, they have a job description, does that match our job description closely enough to consider it? Should we be considering those apples to apples? I also included the uh. Vacation days offered, which I hadn't done in the past cuz we've been in pretty good shape, so we talked about it in the personnel manual about changing vacation days, so I thought I'd. Throw that in there. The other one is the, how do we match up valuation wise, and Lisa, how did we do this last year and it worked out really well? Again, we're right in the middle of all the communities that we compare to. Um, we're, we're at or below average, actually, by the feel of that, so. Sam, this was tabled, you know, you, we wanted a full council for everyone here to, to discuss this. Um, any questions? I guess I.
I, I also like that you included the um, the health plan and the health savings because, because those really factor in to wages too.
Yeah.
I didn't, didn't really get a lot of good data on it the last time, so I was lucky enough to get enough data on it this time that I could include it.
Well, we did change some of our communities cuz cities, we do a population each time too and try to. See which community they're responding and stuff so that we can only put, I think it's twenty communities on it, so.
And thirteen out of those twenty, right? Yeah, thirteen out of those twenty we compared to, so that's pretty good, I think that's seventy five percent of the communities that we select on. Based on our population, valuation, et cetera, so on and so forth.
And we usually still go with a couple that are out of our parameter a little bit that are still locally based, just so that we can have. It out in our aerials. If there's no other.
I did stick to the data to exclude those, so I said thirteen out of twenty, I excluded seven because they were either, yeah, Imperial was one of them.
Hmm.
Um, they're just outside of our realm of comparison, based on the parameters that you guys have given me in years past.
Right.
So I didn't wanna bring this to you and say, okay, now delete X, Y, and Z, so. I tried to stay within the parameters of you guys. Set. In your past, so I hope, hope I did a close enough job for that.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, to consider, do we wanna do a wage correction mid-year or do we wanna do it budget? It would be the, the two questions that um I would put before the council. I know budget is easier because that is included in the budget than mid-year, but.
We're talking about a couple of communities that are going this way and are planning to go this way in future. With the current economic status, inflation, so on and so forth, um. I don't have a good list to put together yet to say it's X, Y, and Z community. Uh, but there are, and and I know some private organizations that are doing this as well, uh, with a sort of a mid-year adjustment, so.
I mean, it said the budget doesn't increase our tax asking, you know, I'm not, I'm.
Did include on that sheet. Um. There's five positions that are below comparable communities. The last time we did this, you guys had said, take us to average, take us to the midterm. So that's what I tried to do for those five, um. It would increase our year-end payroll by seven thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars, so we're talking about moving the needle. The one point five three percent increase overall.
You think our benefits back might be good?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, after how much we, we don't, how much we pay, we have HSA, you know, our deductibles are low for our employees, we have. The top life insurance. Top six sig lead.
Vacation days, paid like paid holidays.
Yeah, top paid holidays.
Paid holidays, yeah.
Yeah.
But, eh, especially with the uh. How much we pay for healthcare, I mean, that really. Is, I, I think shows that we weigh in from other cities.
No, retirement measures, good, yeah.
It's good. Yeah, we're, we're in the high ones, yeah, we're in the higher ones.
We just, I mean, about the average on retirement, average is four point three, we offer up to five percent.
Really?
Um, so I would call that average, uh. Same way with health insurance funding, um, as far as comparing to communities that pay one hundred and one hundred, uh, family and individual. Again, we're, we're, we're comparable, we're midpoint, we're average with those communities.
Well, even with like, um, turn to the county, even within our own area, yeah.
We are above, or sorry. We are below average on our deductibles compared to average, so our deductibles are lower compared to average, so that's a good thing. Our health savings account, um. We're below average, we're below average there, we offer less than other communities do.
But I think that's, you know, our deductibles are higher, yeah.
And that, those two play together, so if you have a lower deductible, you should probably add a lower HSA contribution. Um. And then, yeah, the premiums, we're, we're below average on our premium overall that we pay. Uh, monthly, average was seventy-nine, let's call it eight thousand, and we're seventy-two thirty, so.
And the employee can contribute to their age if they save in the council, when they're lower than our people's type of, yeah, they need to do that, you know?
And we have some to take advantage of that, absolutely. Yep, life insurance, we're among the top. About, we're among the top six there, so.
You know, the holiday, like, highest. Yeah, we're the highest of the holiday. Maybe we should back off on the holiday.
What holiday has been not given them in?
Well, easily.
Huh?
Two D, M D, present day.
Yeah, some of those.
We, we, we long expected to.
Yeah.
Uh, offer whatever the state wants to offer.
Yeah.
Um, and I will tell you that some of those are incorrect because they don't include what they call a floating holiday. And a lot of communities get two floating holidays, so they may get their anniversary and their birthday, um, it's to be determined basically, it's a holiday at will. So that nine may look really good, but it's probably more like eleven and twelve, so we're really offering like, I would say, one more holiday. Which may just need to.
So the one thing I haven't done, I don't really know, despite of having, so I don't have an Excel spreadsheet, but have you, have you looked at the communities and taken? Like across the board for benefit, and this would be a little bit difficult to do because all these numbers are wacky, but if, if you, if you take their numbers for. Vacation days and benefits and like health insurance premiums, all, if you add them all up, like. Are other communities figuring out where to give and take? Better than we are, are we all figuring out the same way, cuz, you know, we're walking through these categories saying we're higher, we're higher, we're even, whatever. If we're higher on our coverage for health savings plan, but we're lower over here, how does that compare to a community that's the opposite? You see, know what I'm saying?
And you have this. There's some experience too with wages.
Yeah.
Because obviously, long, and then there.
Do they have more tenured employees where their wages look?
That's something I was asking, so.
So, right, I, I guess I'm just curious, like. Is there a way that we can combine these numbers for the companies to give, the companies, sorry, corporate, corporate, for communities? To just give them like a community number, can we compare that number, yeah, like, how do we?
So there, there is, we hire a firm to do that, consulting firms.
That'll, yeah, I just would like to take the Excel spreadsheet and work some magic on pivot tables. But, because it's a question, I just feel like that's our consideration always when we're talking about. Our health plan and our HSA, we're thinking, okay, do we increase the cost of that? Because our increase, you know, our costs are increasing and then try to increase the wages to help with that, or can we only do one or the other, like. We're always giving and taking, I have to assume other communities are as well, so taken in silos, it's, it's tough to understand what's happening, right?
So I think when you lay it all out, I mean, like you're saying, Kim, it's not all in one sort of overall picture.
Yeah.
But when you lay it all out, we're, we offer a really good, uh, very attractive.
I feel like that's what I'm seeing, I'm just wondering if we need to show it in some other way, cuz.
Very attractive. The only, I guess the only, I mean, when you silo it, the only area I feel like we're lacking is probably employees. I think in every other silo, we offer a good back to back, um.
Which the only information we really don't have about that is how long has each of these employees been there, we know we have a young staff.
Yes.
Hmm, in some departments now compared to what we used to have five years ago even, I would say.
Yes.
And, yeah, we're seeing now, like, going through clerk stuff and stuff, everybody's retiring, we're seeing a big influx of. Everybody starting from scratch.
So next year, it may be different, and, and let's say, Atkinson, but. I don't want Atkinson to do this, but Atkinson has to hire a, a new city clerk, right? And, and they're gonna, they're obviously not gonna start her, she's already here, they're gonna start whatever midpoint is currently, or whatever market is currently, so. If we wanna be competitive at that, we, we, we should be at, at least at midpoint. I mean, and not just to cover what is, what is it gonna take to hire that next employee, as we talked about earlier. It's Jessie, Robin, we, we don't got infinite days, we've only got the time we were given, so, I mean, there's. There's, I, I understand what you're saying, but there's not a, we can hire, we can hire a firm, and I will tell you that there's some larger community to do that on the three week dating day.
It was, um, like ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't think we need to really, I don't even think we need to do that, I mean, if we could even take the categories we're looking at and say.
It's not even close.
Out of fifteen categories, we are above average, out of fifteen categories, you know, we have two that are below average, like. Even just to get. You found the spreadsheet, so it'd probably just be easier for you to do it, I could do it manually, but just curious.
And I was gonna say, like, the health insurance, every community is different, everybody does things differently, some, some of these like that, you only have like four or five to compare because they may. They're just self-funded, or they, and they will illustrate some of that through the.
I did see the designation of who is self-funded and not, so that, that's helpful.
So, um.
Yeah, I can do that, I can, I can certainly say, okay, there's, we're looking at whatever it is, thirteen silos.
Yeah.
Out of those thirteen, we are at or above. We are, or sorry, above average, at average, or below average.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, it would just, yeah.
But speaking of health insurance, while we're on it, has it been a good switch to go with the leaves?
Yeah, it's working out.
For me, it has.
Has it, no, has it worked out?
Yeah.
Is it okay, I mean.
I, I, I haven't noticed, I mean.
Have you had to tell the doctor?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't noticed, I have only been one very little while.
So it's only been one very little while.
Been dabbing on the kids.
Well, I, I know that's off subject, but I just wondered, I know we'll get a new, you know, new update, I just wondered if it. Was smooth and going well compared to, you know, when you change things.
I, I assume that it's somebody would be knocking down somebody's door if it wasn't, so.
But even on those wages too, if you look at the health insurance premiums, some of those communities, I'm really paid, I mean, like, El Creek, there's.
I think their wages are higher because they're paying a huge, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, it's, you think about that with your budget, maybe in your life, I have.
They're. Yes.
Right.
Well, some of them have managed ten employees.
Yeah.
I mean, they probably have managed. A lot more than.
Well, plus, you know. When you contribute more to retirement, and then you, you retire, you know, so, I mean, my father wanted a good job because they were gonna, if you're working permanently, he's able to retire eight years early. I mean.
Cause I fear not everybody thinks that way, right, like, there's a lot of things we're doing that are not going directly into your paycheck, but they are preventing things from coming out of your paycheck. Or, or preventing you from, I mean, to work as long as you possibly, yeah, they don't.
Right. So, the makers on the, on, on panel can probably, um, um, can probably tell you like, how much faster you can retire with five percent or three percent.
Yeah.
You know, and so, you know, you potentially, yes, maybe a annual of a lot, but you're actually maybe getting two extra years if you're retired.
Yeah.
Two years early, you know, so, I don't know the actual calculation for that, which is five percent or three percent, so, you know.
I don't try to be any pressure, clearly.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I, I mean, but we're already.
Yes, yes.
And so that's what I mean, it's also, that's supposed to be needed, it's only in three, you know, what, what is that?
Does that mean, right?
What, what does that mean, years?
Hmm, the same with the cost of insurance.
Maybe.
It's, uh, like, when Randy moved from profit to Midwest, he did a substantial cut in pay, but because of the benefit package. On paper, we had more money.
Yeah.
You're eighty-one one.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I will add that, uh, to the next, to the next topic, so, how many silos are we above or below or the permanent categories or whatever you wanna call them?
Give an Excel spreadsheet, or on hold, make it say how much cash you can retire.
You can come back and tell us.
How much pressure are you doing, sorry?
I would love to know.
Yeah. Yep.
Can we, can we probably raise the weight?
So, do you hear that we wanna take somebody one night?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think if we're, if we're going to be looking at raises and things, I'm kind of along the lines that Sam is on, if we don't have to. Increase our tax asking, we have the money in the budget for all the costs freely to increase, even. What we need to increase on wages and then find a way to make cycle.
I, I ask for the year next meeting, so.
Well, we can take work to the.
I wanna preface that to the, um. I, you know, a couple of years ago, started working on all the time. And trying to fix that, so, I know, I know the guys have been working really hard on it, Jessie was, she's really the only one to. I know, I know the guys have been working really hard on it, Jessie was, she's really the only one who can do what she does, uh, so we, she does try to.
Has trucks about it.
She does, she pulls her hair out about overtime, so they're not too bad, um, I know the guys are, they're trying to do some more flexing. Especially with like, just that one hour overtime, that's a mix up, add that up every month, every week, for fifty two weeks. It can make or break the difference in whether or not we can afford to give a one point three percent pay increase. Uh, so, we are still, we're still working on that, I can tell you, we're hovering right around ten to twelve thousand. I mean, you think about that on a big picture, that's not, I mean, look at last year, the snow we had, um. We went up to twelve thousand dollars in overtime, or over twelve thousand dollars. This year, not so much, you know, we had a couple of sort of snow storms, hopefully, spring is nice to us. I wouldn't knock it, otherwise that snow coming in how that. Yeah, so we we're still, I guess, we're flexing fine, and limiting overtime as much as we can, and I think. We renewed that.
Yeah.
Your motion to table it to.
You did it?
Sure you did.
Okay, sorry, again, put words in your mouth.
Turn it on, Kimberly did you second?
Yes.
Kimberly second, but we table this till March twenty sixth, and you need more discussion. Andrew?
Yes, Sam?
Yes.
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 Motion carried, table to.
March, really, very, very.
March twenty sixth.
Sam's calling the next meeting.
Yes, because I prefer to make these kind of decisions.
I will send out the due sheet by itself, in a form, hopefully you get over it.
Then, you know, I, any of us company across as wind mail is not opening it, anyone else is having it as a test. You do, yeah, I'm like, take media from the house, it never happens, never takes through the right ways today.
I've got my Chromebook and my phone, I got to move them over to the.
Okay, I will contact our I T twenty twenty, I can see what they're doing, so. Yeah.
Jessie's always comes across as a word doc.
She's not a little bit of, so, for those people who are, you know, Jessie are doing email.
They're gonna come in March then, hopefully, so, yes.
I thought I thought we were good to go, Jessie was not good to go.
I know, Ed, you're like, what? You told them I had a new email address, I don't have a new email address yet.
So, yeah, we will wanna get ahead of that before you position, or slightly position anything.
Okay, okay, Jessie, if you can read ordinance twenty four zero two zero one.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero two dash zero one, an ordinance operating and directing execution of the amendment. And restated total power requirement, power purchase agreement. By the city of Brandon, Perkins County, Nebraska, with the municipal energy agency of Nebraska. To acknowledge and provide for limitation from misuse of electricity. Describe the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Alrighty.
Concerning, bringing your negotiation up to contract? Okay. Okay, I've said a couple of concerns there, I'm hoisted, I don't, I have concerns that they don't have anything prepared for themselves on me, it's the appears.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you have the same concern, okay?
We talked to them about that a lot of time, and their issues, I would say, are a tip, like.
Okay.
But there are problems, I don't know where to go, the delta is then. Um, and obviously, those contracts are very unchangeable to them, and you know, they say, we feel it violated half a five years' duration.
Okay.
It's like twenty years.
So there is no, yeah, because they want contract, and then and then me is the only option, because that's not a question, it's like, do you know whether like?
Well, there's other options, but. They're not, in reality, in reality, when it comes down to money, they're not.
Possessive place, it's not.
Well, suspected liability, um, I just, I wanted to just describe what it says.
And the only thing they don't define is what is, like, I'm saying, right to access, that they can come in premises at all reasonable times, what is all reasonable times?
Whatever they say.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, okay.
I was not very happy about some of the things about myself, obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, but obviously, you said it doesn't work for negotiation, so I guess that's the.
So, I will tell you that there is one community that chose, not only chose to not go with the new contract, but also chose to. Stop taking full purchase power from them, and their first month recovered their entire budget of buying off the market. In one month. So that would, that would be one of the three options we could go with, is buying off the market.
Uh, just. Okay, all right, well, thanks.
I wanna say that at least, at least we have a seat at the table. Um, I I get a voice, Brant's, I get, I gotta be the voice of Brant, thanks to you guys for pointing me that, but. I I gotta go down to Lincoln or Carney and and say, hey, you know, these are, you need to be worried about small town concerns and not just about Lincoln and. North Platte, and, you know, all of these larger communities that they serve, and all of the other states that they serve, um, we we need a voice too, and. The other entities that provide power in this area do not give me that opportunity. Uh, in fact, they're adamant that it's, you don't need a voice, so. Me is a very, I'm saying this because of my time being able to be a representative, but me is a very good company. They, when we, when there's too much money, we give it back to the communities. Uh, when we've grossed too much money for the year, and we have a gross revenue, or a net revenue, sorry, that comes back to the communities. We've gotten checks several of the last years, um, three day checks that came back, so. It's it's not an evil, it's not an evil company, it really.
It's the best of the worst, is what I'm hearing. Alright, action and discussion on award of bid of the grand street improvement twenty twenty four. Dash one.
So, in your packet, we had two bidders, um, Tom was present for the bid opening, verified the bid barns. Uh, the two bidders were C S C Construction out of Grant, uh, we have a longstanding issue with and Level L F C out of North Platte. Who did our downtown renovations, and obviously, you can see the disparity there, a lot of that is local, uh, C S C wants to be here, so. I would say with our longstanding, and Tom agreed, uh, history with C S C, that there is a right to make the shoes for this project, so. He recommended the award bid to C S C. Recommend the same. He will, uh, the next, uh, he doesn't do this with other communities, uh, but. Uh, we will get, obviously, the contract next from C S C, then that'll be approved, he has moved to other communities approving the bid and the contract.
It all summarized there.
Yeah, it's quite, quite the difference.
Yeah. And I will make a motion to award the. More bid for the city of Grand Street Improvement twenty twenty four dash one to C S C. In the amount of one seventy four eight hundred and sixty.
Okay. Kimberly, move to any second that we accept the bid for the preview grant street improvement twenty twenty four one to. C S C in amount of one hundred and seventy four thousand eight hundred and sixty, any discussion? Sam, how do you?
Andrew?
Yes, Kimberly?
Yes.
Alright, you're up.
Um, I guess, I'm here to ask you guys for, um, peanut butter possible, I'm here to represent the. Um, parents of the senior class of Perkins County High School. Um, also, my age, I'm Taylor.
That's okay, yeah.
Um, I get this responsibility nearly cast by Sunday side, the price of it.
It does creep you down, doesn't it?
Yeah, none of them decide, that would be, they're all at the basketball. So, at least they're cheering on our team, you know, yeah, but. I'm just asking for some, I was like, you don't have a, give me a whole lot to. Give to them, but it helps like with the drug free, alcohol free, whole scene, you know, keep the kids. Entertaining longer there, that way they aren't out messing around the streets and causing ruckus, ruckus, and all that sort of stuff.
I did include the distribution some of that.
Yeah. You can't just think it for including helping to rent the, you know, stuff that we've been at kind of like casino night. For male and guys away, and then like some sports things or whatever, because there are a lot of kids that like those, or, um, like. Powerball or whatever, and then they're gonna do some sort of tournament thing, and, we got a bunch of things planned, yeah. Hopefully, it all works out.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah, thank you for waiting so big for me on this, and, uh, yeah, Jessie did include the.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, the pastor.
Yes.
You're pricing four hundred dollars?
Yeah, four hundred or two hundred, whatever's available.
Well, we have it available, and it's been there, we're at the realm, we've given it in the past.
And by the way, kudos for your H S A thing, I was like, our family really loves it.
Thank you.
Recommended this year.
Especially parents with an athlete, yes.
Yes, yeah, especially parents with family.
Friday, we go to the, or Phoenix for a class, yeah.
Been there.
Yes, oh, yeah.
I move to accept or give four hundred dollars to the Perkins County Post from.
Okay. Kimberly, move to any second that we give four hundred dollars to the Perkins County Post, um, can maybe any more discussion? Charity, how do you go?
Yes.
The moon?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Fun.
Back, just besides a typical bank and, Terrell Michelle rocks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Alright, action and discussion on revised. Automated weather observing system agreement between Grant Municipal Airport and the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
So that's what we're doing to financial, there's a, Jessie, I want to see an E C H in there, like the N D beacon is coming out, what's going on? So we're probably need to contact Marcy, so Marcy did get ahold of us and send us a restated or a. Redrafted agreement, which is lower than our original price, so, hey, that's all right, I'll pick a lower payment whenever we can get one.
So Marcy said that she would let this this mistake happen before they started to withdraw, because they had grabbed the wrong. Unit or something, is what I understood on it, and so it is a lower price. But she also wants us to be aware that they are looking at increasing the rates on me. And it would be July. I think it was July first, I don't think it was in this email, then, I think it was July first.
Yeah, that's what you.
So, um, it could then initially actually increase another ten percent, and then they'll send another contract, and we'll do this. But she also said beacon rates may be reduced or stay the same at that time, so. If they are reduced, they may kind of offset each other at that point or two, so.
We're also looking at the possibility now that we have the A W O S, I know a couple of the communities are looking at this as well, um, we don't necessarily. Need to carry the non-directional beacon anymore, the beacon is not the rotating light. Uh, the non-directional beacon is actually information that the pilots can look up online. Uh, now that we have the A W O S and it's doing that all the time, and they can call in, um. We don't, there there's a, there's a statement to be made for not needing that non-directional beacon. If you go out to the airport, the non-directional beacon is actually in that little white hut, kind of in the middle of the grassy area, um. So I I didn't wanna be on the Guinea pig trial list for this just yet, I'm kinda waiting for a couple other communities. Um, and see how it goes for them, so we may be eliminating that contract altogether, since. In the state of Nebraska, the Department of Aeronautics vision not necessary in the future, so. But nothing yet, not now, but we may get to a point where if Imperial and Ogallala and. Alliance and Scotts Bluff have done away with their A V Bs because they have any loss, then we, we may look at. Doing away with our.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Non-directional beacon, not a rotating light.
And I will, will not do any adjustment to those in claims listings because it was at a higher rate. So when it does come through, we'll still be okay, so, but I would change the rate in the next bills and claims when we. I knew it on our monthly basis.
I say a proven slower rate, so, I make a motion to approve the revised A W O S agreements. Uh, from that initial airport, and that's for our transportation, and authorize the. Uh, aeronautics director assignments, that's what's said in the back.
Authorize the mayor's.
Yeah, mayor's assignment.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Sam, move, Kimberly, second, that we accept the contract between. The Grant Municipal Airport and Nebraska Department of Transportation, authorizing the mayor to sign, any discussion? Charity, move?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It does. I know, I I need, I need to pay this.
So, we're, we're the airport.
Title up there, you know, something, yeah.
Sam, we are the airport sponsor, city of Grant is the airport sponsor.
Sponsor, oh, I was.
I got you. So, yeah, I know you're airport sponsor and mayor, you're the airport sponsor.
The city of Grant is the airport sponsor.
Yeah. Alright, bills and claims. Action on bills and claims, we may now get one hundred sixty eight thousand eight hundred ninety two dollars and sixty cents. Second, ready move, and the second that we accept billings claims in amount one hundred sixty eight thousand eight hundred ninety two dollars. And sixty seven cents, any discussion? Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Three, motion carried.
And overview.
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight twenty six. Um, thank you everyone, to the hardware.